This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, this is Harold Watson, Chairman of the Planning Commission. Due to the coronavirus nineteen pandemic, we are conducting this monthly meeting on GoToMeetings.com on Tuesday, March sixteenth at six thirty P M. At this forum, the quorum for this meeting is three, and now we'll go through the list. Christina Kazanis is absent tonight. William Boyd.
Here.
Myself, I'm here. Dan?
Present, sir.
And John Staley is absent also. So we do have a quorum. Is Debbie Lamberty here tonight? No, okay. So even with that, we do have a quorum. Please identify yourself by name and title each time you would like to speak. This is per Governor Lamont's executive order, which allows us to conduct virtual meetings. The public is free to listen, but may speak only at the invitation of the Chair. With that, I will call the meeting to order this month of the Stratford Planning Commission at six thirty, at six thirty-three P M. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Hearing none? We're in, we're in business tonight. We have two things that we need to do tonight. It's a really short meeting, and really it's for you guys to be able to speak more than me. So I hope you'll appreciate that. We have two minutes that we need to approve, correct? Aileen? The first one is our minutes from February sixteenth, our last general meeting. Will someone?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second?
I'll second.
I'll second, Dan Sams.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Oh.
Okay, accepted. The next one is our special meeting of March the eleventh, which was a joint meeting with zoning, C B A, and also town council.
Motion to approve.
Anybody second?
I'll second that.
Okay, anybody opposed? Hearing none? It's accepted. If anybody looked at our agenda tonight, we really have nothing on it. The only thing that I would like to do is to give you guys, I wanted every, hoping everybody would be here, particularly John, because I know he's been studying up on this. But Dan and William, since you're the two voices tonight, it's your, your turn to give me some feedback on what you heard from the Stratford Partnership. Our next meeting, my next meeting that I'm going to be with the partnership is the twenty-sixth. But what I'd like to do, I'd like to put together a little letter with some of our comments to send them forward to Glenn before he puts together the final, final document that we are essentially going to vote on for the next meeting. So hopefully you guys got from Aileen the copy of the executive summary and the full document. William, I know that you had questions about some of the backup materials, and there really are, there really are a lot of them on the website if you look at them. So why don't we start with you, if that's okay?
Certainly. I think the meeting was really good. It was a lot of data, and it was hard to take in all that data and then respond in real time and then respect the amount of people on there to not try to dominate and slow the meeting down. So the couple of questions I had that I really didn't get a clear answer to was, number one, was relaxing zoning, because all this is about building different things, how the building's going to look, who does what, where. But most, or some of this, or I would say a great deal of this can be handled by just relaxing certain zoning laws to where you can subdivide your own land. Because, say, on my street here, Sedgwick Avenue, each plot on my street has about a quarter acre, but you can't subdivide it because you don't have enough front. So there, I'm sure there are other parts of town with similar situations, or even better. But based on the, the laws, land records or laws on the books now, the use of that land as we stand now, you cannot use it, build on it. You can't really do anything with it, and I think that would free up quite a bit or meet quite a few of the needs that we were discussing.
Well, you managed, if I can comment, you managed to hit on exactly why I wanted to have this discussion today. And the committee is very aware of the fact that what this really does is all of our basic zoning that we run up against every time that we have any development come before us, needs to be looked at and reexamined and essentially rewritten. Now, so Samantha has made it very clear that that's not going to be up for planning to rewrite. We're going to have to bring in a consultant to look at those three, basically it's the three major zoning problems that we look at. We're going to have to get outside help to give us clear advice as to how to do it. Because the devil is in the details, that you know that fully well. I've been studying very closely the desegregate Connecticut group out of Hartford. Luke Bronin's wife, I think it is, who runs it. And if we, if Stratford got caught up in what they're saying, we would be in real serious trouble, because it essentially asks communities to give up local zoning. And we don't want to do that, but at the same time, we do want to find a way to change our zoning to accommodate local people being able to do things.
Right. And it's not a matter of, you know, I did see some of that on the news last night, like Fairfield, Westport, they're trying to relax certain things because they could see that they don't really want certain sectors of people in there. So it's everyone's like, not in my backyard, not here, it's too dense. But there's something that can be done, and what is that? And I think hiring a consultant with a third voice or another voice that's not part of the town can say, these are the things that can be done, and these are the things that have been done in other towns or cities that can work, as opposed to the non-objective people in a certain town trying to be objective. That doesn't seem to work.
Well, you also have to compare Stratford to New Canaan and the other town. We are in a different situation. A third of our housing is already affordable. So that's a, that's a subject that needs to be fought very hard. In the last three or four pages of the, of the document, William, if you go back through those really carefully, there are things that are suggestions for change. There are other items where specific, like the eight thirty G regulations are brought up as a separate item that need to be looked at in terms of changing those. So it's, it's both a macro and a micro changes that would have to take place.
And you're talking about section ten, consider other strategies? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, but also there's specifically when you go into zoning, it lists, yes, it lists specific things. It lists, there's a section that I'm well represented in, which is the section of things you might want to think about.
And with that being said, my second point was, you know, center school is back up for discussion again. Center school looks like a perfect situation for what they're talking about in terms of the walk score, biking, it's on the transit way. I mean, that one hits all the, all, hits all those buttons. I don't understand why that one's being, you know, that's so difficult to get a plan around.
Well, the good thing, the good thing, if we can, we can say this publicly, is because it's part of the, of the TOD, there already are a lot of, a lot of what we would look for in terms of development already exist in that area. Walkability, affordability, you know, all of those things, compactness, even density exist already in, in that parcel. So in a way, it does represent what Stratford could apply to Main Street and Barnum Avenue, which is where the focus is going to be in this whole issue, I do believe. At least that's what people are saying, so.
Right, and my very, very last point is Lordship has a tremendous, and I keep saying the same thing, Lordship Boulevard, when you get off exit thirty, there's parcels to the left, there's parcels being developed on the right, I'm not sure what it's going to be, but there's a multitude of land there that I don't understand, that's like perfect for some kind of dense housing that won't really affect anyone.
What I ask you to do is go into the P O C D, because the P O C D, the vision of Lordship Boulevard is really our commercial slash light industrial district.
Okay.
It's very much like, it's envisioned to be something like a mini Annapolis, Maryland, if you know anything about that area, where they have combined retail, commercial with, with residential.
Yeah, Arlington, Virginia's like that.
Yeah.
Perfect.
That, that, that's, that street has, so it's been ten years now, basically, that it's been in the P O C D, that's what we would like to look for. The problem that we have, and that's where one of the, one of the things that was mentioned at the last meeting by, I don't remember his name, Bob O'Brien brought it up, was that we should think seriously as a town about coming up with a design plan. Now, Samantha's really a lot more of an expert at this, she actually could probably help us, but that we consider doing a pre-design and selling that pre-design to a developer. Samantha, do you want to comment on that?
I support it. Turn my camera off for a sec.
I don't know if we can do a pre-designed, you know, development, because.
Do you put some cold water in my washcloth?
Yeah, I don't think that might work, because it depends on developers' finances, but definitely like Glenn mentioned, Glenn is our consultant, Dan, he mentioned at the meeting a tool called Planned Development District, which kind of, you know, is a zoning tool to allow mixed-use developments of a certain density and scale with a set of design standards that are aesthetic with open space requirements and density requirements and form requirements that actually could be adopted and, you know, as an overlay district and applied to various new developments in the town. But that one, like I said, it might have some legal issues associated with it if we did not do it right. So it is always better to have outside help when we're developing standards like that.
Samantha, is that something that usually is applied to a specific parcel or to a district?
It depends on the size of the parcels. In New Haven, what they did was if there's a parcel about an acre or less than an acre, then I think it's a P D U called Planned Development Unit. And if it's more than an acre, it'll be Planned Development District. So you can apply essentially to any size parcels based on what tool you're trying to use. And all those mixed-use developments that you have seen that have come up recently in New Haven are mostly those Planned Development Districts or Planned Development Units. And Glenn was suggesting that as an example for Stratford to, you know, encourage mixed-use developments right away. I think we have a new person, Chairman.
We do, I see Joe, Joe, your last name is?
Well, it's Mo, I don't know where Joe came from, Mo Shaletti, just a.
Okay.
Two names observed.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you. How's it going?
The other thing, William, that we have to always keep in mind is Lordship Boulevard is going to be impacted, is impacted by the new flood requirements.
Yes.
So that, what, what we planned fifteen years ago can't be built as is right now. It's going to really have to be rethought, because so much of that is, is underwater, according to the new FEMA maps. So it's not, it's not undoable, but it's going to really have to, we're going to have to be very careful with some of those parcels in the future in order to have a buildable parcel. That's the other thing that I, that I, I see in all these discussions, even out of, coming out of Hartford, is that they want us to back off on dealing with wetlands. And Stratford is to the point that most of our available land has wetlands or abuts wet, wetlands. The reason it was never built on is because twenty years ago, no one wanted to build on a wetland or abutting a wetland. But we're now down to those parcels being our remaining parcels, short of redeveloping existing parcels. So I think that planning is going to have to step up and decide, do we want to promote redevelopment, or do we want to promote the development of these last remaining parcels that are more and more, I think, in a dangerous situation? Did I, did we cover, William, did I, did we give you enough?
Yes, and, and this is for a future meeting, and maybe Samantha can give us this. Is there a way you can provide us with plots or areas in town that are already meet the criteria, or they've already been looked at, that can be developed, or things that are forthcoming? Do you have a database of land like that, or?
Well, that's something we have to ask the Office of Economic Development regarding development opportunities. I think they put out on their website, I know when I was searching the town of Stratford webpage, I came across a matrix that showed potential opportunities for development. And they keep updating from time to time. Regarding residential, largely it is private property. So it's the private property owners that have more property rights on those, on what can and cannot be developed, we cannot mandate that. So with respect to town and parcels, we do have a database that Economic Development puts up on their webpage.
Could we invite, Samantha, could we invite someone from Economic Development to come to our next meeting and just give us a general rundown? Are they looking? I know they're actively trying their best to do as good a job as they can, but could they give us a, some sense of the kind of projects they're looking at, what they think developers are wanting for Stratford? You know, are they all a hundred unit apartment buildings? Is, will there ever be a chance that we can get a six unit done? Do you want me, just so we could have some kind of discussion?
Well, I can certainly invite them, and, you know, I'll let Mary Dean know, who's the Director of Economic Development. But like I said, regarding residential, they have very little control, because it's all on private property. And, you know, private property is based on what a developer wants to do and which zones they're planning it under. For the most part, our multifamily regulation is, has become obsolete, so we are not able to, you know, enact that regulation. And our R S four zone, or, you know, R S one to R S four zones might allow some condominiums, but again, they allow on large lands, like twenty acres or more. So basically, the tool that we are left with is just the T O D right now, which allows multifamily housing development. And T O D is in and around the town center, and it has a certain density requirement, like for fifty bedrooms, for a maximum of fifty bedrooms for forty thousand square foot lot size. So that is the density, the maximum cap density. And for the smaller lots, typically, you know, you can't do more than having a three-family home or a two-family home. Again, those also depend on whether lots are conforming or not, because if the lots are not conforming, you cannot create two-family homes, because now you're enabling a non-conforming lot if a property owner wants to sell half of his piece to somebody else. So there are issues with our regulations that have to be addressed in order to enable on smaller-sized lots. And that's the reason we embarked on this housing plan, because zoning needs a land use basis for legality. And the next step would be actually, after we adopt the plan, to work on the zoning regulations and make those changes so that people can also build on smaller-sized lots and not large-scale developments. But with respect to economic development, the sites that they're looking at is like Stratford Army Engine Plant or Center School, either it's town-owned or it's a large, you know, developer-based parcel that has, you know, town involved in it and not like any residential developments. On their own, I mean, Center School could be a residential development, I don't know.
So if I can interject, so I own a two-family down in Stamford, and it's basically on a cul-de-sac, but the majority of the street was all single-family homes. Today, ninety-five percent are multifamily. And it's, and I have to tell you that it's now creating a lot of chaos down in Stamford, because they allowed this, they loosened the regulations, and now alls you see up and down, you know, which were small residential streets, are multifamily homes with cars that can't park on, you know, in their driveways any longer, parking on the street. And it's, it's created a lot of, a lot of hardship for those single-family homes that are still, you know, amongst those, amongst those streets. So we, I think we need to be careful, like, you know, Stamford really loosened up and, and allowed this to happen, and it has caused some, some real problems. But if we do it in a way that's confined in finding the right situations, I think it's fine to do. I think really that's our only alternative. As Samantha just mentioned, you know, economic development, they're looking at larger projects right now, and we're pretty much landlocked in Stratford when it comes to residential property. So, you know, it's, it's, it's difficult for us, but by the same token, I think there's some opportunities there, as long as we just don't loosen the reins so much where it now becomes a virtual parking lot and an issue for, you know, residents that have been there for years.
Dan, Dan, miss? Go ahead, Samantha, then I'll follow.
Yeah, if I may add, I also heard in our office that two-family homes are really problematic for enforcement, because it's very hard to enforce who's living there, who's renting it out, who, and how many individuals are living in that home. So we, you know, when we are writing the regulation, we have to be very careful on how this gets tackled in the long term.
And I can speak to that, to Dan's point, I'm from Stamford, and there are houses that have condos behind them, and literally, everybody can't leave at the same time to go to work, you can't get out. And Dan knows what I'm saying, they built whole units on back of houses. And secondly, to a multifamily, I live in a multifamily, and you're right, you can't regulate how many people live there, but that also can't be the total concern why you don't allow them, because at some point, there's no way to regulate how many people live in a single family either. So at some point, you have to set the standard, and to Dan's point, to Samantha and Harold, to a point where you relax some things, but not in such that you're going to overdo it, but it has to be a relaxation of something, because you can't control everything, it's too many variables.
Well, I think, let's go, let's go back to the bigger picture, that it would be easy to say, we're not going to do any change. But I think one of the things we learned through the partnership is that there really is a need for more affordable housing. A two-family house, no matter what its impact on the town is, meets a dollar need, and even a square footage need for a whole segment of our population. Now, the question is, would we rather have a two-family house, or would we rather have an eighty-bedroom or forty-bedroom building? You know, it's, it's, we have, we have to find a balance if we are going to build on affordability. So if, one of the, one of the other, and Dan, that was my question to you was, having, having had long-term experience with a two-family and then a two-family neighborhood, can you think of any ways it could be done better?
Well, first of all, you know, once you allow it to happen, it's very difficult to monitor. In other words, you know, as, as William just alluded to, and also Samantha, that, you know, now, you know, have a two-family house, and then you find out there's twelve people living in one home, and you got seven cars outside parked on the street. So in my particular area, they, you know, you have parking permits for the, for the street, and, you know, you have, you have the police that come down and enforce, you know, restrictions as far as people not being, you know, not having their stickers and, and ticketing them, but it's, and we're close to the water, so then you have the problem with people going to the beach and, and running, running into people just showing up out of nowhere. So it's, it's difficult to monitor, and I, you know, I look at it, and I'm saying the town loves it because of the tax dollars that they're generating, but by the same token, it's, it's, it's a challenge. So you've got to be very, very careful on how you work it. And like I said, with Stratford being landlocked, and once you open that door, it's very difficult to close it in, in particular areas, you know, so.
Dan, when we were, when we were on plan, when we were working a year, two years ago, maybe, maybe it was before you were on, when we redid parking, were you, were you on when we were spent all the time?
Yeah. Yep.
One of the things that we, we, we reduced was the requirement for apartments, we went down to one and a half spaces per apartment. So if you're taking a two-family house, you really are talking about three, three parking spaces. So, but in reality, if you have two couples living in two, in two.
Apartment.
Adults living there, you could have four cars, which means you're already over one car. If they have two, two kids there, you could end up with five cars. So you suddenly have used up all of your spaces, including your street parking.
Then you have, you have tenant issues where one parks behind the other in the driveway, they can't get out for work in the morning, and the other person's sleeping, and then you get a phone call saying that, you know, so it's, it's.
Let me play devil's advocate with you, because we look at it from a planning, from town issue, but if I were a developer coming in saying that, you know, one of the big, one of the things that I don't like what Stratford's doing to me is they're insisting on all of these parking spaces. Now, that's in general across the country. Every planner in, in the U S is saying, get rid of your maximums. Push your, allow less parking required, because that is the most expensive part of creating a additional housing. It's no longer affordable if you have to have three parking spaces for every apartment. Yes, Samantha?
And if I may add, it's not just parking, it's also maintenance and living conditions that could probably get impacted, like if there are a bunch of students who go to Yale, who can now take the train and go from Stratford, we would ideally want to provide them that opportunity to rent out in the town, because, you know, older developments have reasonable rents compared to newer developments. So converting two-family homes would probably give them an opportunity for them to share their accommodation, but you never know how many students will start living in that house, and that becomes an enforcement issue, a noise issue, and that's why we have to be very careful on how we craft the regulation and how we enforce it. And some of these things, easier said than done, I think we need to really look carefully. And, and I'm not opposed to it at all, because I know I was a student, I shared accommodation, and I've been through that condition, and I think we should provide that opportunity for the young adults in the community. But how we do it, you know, the devil is in the details, and so we need to really work towards crafting a good regulation.
It is all. Excuse me, I was just going to say, contractually, too, contractually, too, when you're signing a lease, I believe you probably could put stipulations in a lease that, that they need to adhere to, you know, one vehicle and, you know, whatever, whatever the case may be. So that can be stipulated by the, by the landlord, which in fact has to follow the regulations based by that particular town, right? So.
Yeah, and unintended consequences, what really ends up happening is when they built multifamilies, not everyone had a car. That's what people are forgetting. You might have had one car in a two-family house, one person may have drove, or might be two. Now each person has a car, so the cat's out of the bag in terms of parking, but I agree, there are going to be unintended consequences, no matter how you plan, but to everyone's point, you can put certain regulations in, but as a landlord, which I am right now, it's impossible to enforce how many people live in a house unless you are literally right there looking at them. It's impossible to enforce. You, you can put it in the lease, you can say all kinds of things, but the enforcement of it is nearly impossible. I mean, it's just the nature of the beast.
You mean, you're saying if you went to housing court, you couldn't, you could not enforce?
I can tell you on video, I had a Section Eight tenant, and I told Section Eight, there are too many people living there, they're not on the lease. They told me, we can't enforce it. I'm going, I'm telling you, they're there. They're like, yeah, we can't do anything. I'm like, well, wait a minute, you know, so it became an issue that they don't enforce it, as long as they set the lease, they don't enforce it, so it leaves it on the land.
So it leaves it on the landlord and you really can't do anything. Other than move them out, move someone else in, it just becomes a round robin. It's the cops try to catch the robbers. It's not a perfect system, but I'm saying the unintended consequences is not something you plan out of it. You're going to have a percentage of things that are just not going to work right. But overall, if there can be an overall plan to something, because literally, there are no three bedroom apartments. People don't realize this. It's impossible to rent a three bedroom. They don't build them anymore. So what do you do if you have a boy and a girl, your husband and wife? You can't put a boy and a girl on Section 8 in the same bedroom. Most people don't know that. You have to have three bedrooms. There are no three bedrooms being built. Most people don't realize that. So what do you do? Good question, right? So that family that just left Stratford, you want that family to be here to go to the schools that you're paying for? All those kinds of things are what ends up happening. Because you see all the apartment buildings they're building, they have to build storage units because there's no storage and it's only two bedrooms.
Well, that is why Stratford has new storage, new storage companies.
We have more storage.
Let's also not forget, though, we are talking about two different things. We're we're talking about a multifamily house or a dual family houses, housing. But we're also talking about where we're also talking about essentially the equivalent condo units or the equivalent of accessory apartments, which still maintain, although there's a division there, legally, we're talking about one property. What you were talking about earlier, William, was the idea of actually dividing a property and creating two entities. So all of these things are things that we need to think about and that things that would be available to us. But I believe that unintended consequences is a non-political idea. It's something that anybody on any side of the spectrum is worried about and concerned about. It's something that it will, it will have impacts. You know, it's it's something that we have got to put in the extra work now for. Dan, I don't want to, I'm stepping on your time.
No, not at all.
Go ahead.
I want to share my screen with you for one second. Hold on. If I can.
Yeah, I'll try to make you presenter.
Everybody see my screen?
We do.
All right, so this is, just to give you a reference point, this is right off of Exit 9, off of 95.
This is Stanford.
This is Stanford, Connecticut, Seaside Avenue, which is a block away from the the water. I'm actually on Euclid Avenue from here. But if the, this used to be all single family homes on Seaside Avenue. If you look through here, every single one of these units. Now, this used to be a single family home, now multiple, single family home, multiple. The whole street is just littered with multifamily units. And for the most part, I would tell you in a 12 to 14 block area, that's the way it is in Stanford by Cove Beach, which is, you know, a popular spot. But when you look at this and the amount of, this happens to be taken during the daytime when most people are at work. But at night and first thing in the morning, it's a traffic nightmare, as William mentioned before. It is just absolutely crazy. So that's one thing you have to concern yourself with is once you, once you allow this to happen, it it starts to get crazy awfully fast. So we got to be very, very careful on on some of the different regulations that we put into place. But if we do it properly, it can be done without a problem. I'll stop here. That's good.
Thank you, though.
That's good. It's a good video show.
Dan, would you save me a JPEG of that so I can take it to the next partnership meeting? Because I think that's really, that's a valuable visual.
Grandma, tell them on our video. Yeah, I can share this with you, no problem. And actually, you can go just do a Google search on, you know, on Seaside Avenue in Stanford and.
All right, I I could do it, just Seaside Avenue.
Yep.
Okay, I, we're now going to ask Aileen to give her comment. No, she didn't react. So listen, I appreciate what you two have to say. And I, in many ways, I think you're in very good agreement with so many people on the committee. It's statements both of you have made. I've heard the mayor make, I've heard economic development make, I've heard zoning people make. So I think the these issues are not going away. And I I think we're becoming better educated to think about them in a bigger picture than individual projects. And I I think that's our only saving grace is that the more that we think about these in a bigger picture, the less we're going to get trapped on every project, becoming the same problems that we always have. So hopefully, this will be useful. If anybody has any comments they want to send to me, I will forward them on Glenn. Or send them to Sismita, she can forward them on to Glenn. I'll tell you, though, we couldn't ask for a better champion than the work that Glenn has done for us. He really has worked very hard. I think that as a planning board, we need to make sure that we step up and continue to speak because it's very easy for us to get lost in the process. We have to deal with town council, we have to deal with economic development, and we have to deal with zoning. And essentially, we are more than simply the people that carry this over to the P O C D, our Plan of Conservation Development for the next term. But we really do represent the visionaries for Stratford's future. So I hope that we'll continue this dialogue. And if you find information, forward it to me of anything that's happening that makes sense. Send it on and I'll send it to Glenn and it'll go into the into the paper. This committee is not going away, I believe, Sismita, correct?
I don't think so.
The mayor has expressed interest in keeping it functioning, so. Maybe she'll rotate members, I I think. Because you guys, either of you could sit on, sit on that, on this, in the Stratford Housing Partnership and have good contributions. So I think unless you guys have anything else to say, did we lose, we lost our one public guest? No?
I think he's. I think he's split. Mo, are you still on? You still on, Mo?
I think he stepped away from the desk.
Yeah, I was going to ask if he had a comment, but we're okay. Daniel, William, if you have something else to contribute, we have our, we have time for it.
Is it possible that gentleman Glenn, I believe it was, right?
Yes.
Is it possible we can get Glenn just to one of our meetings again to kind of, not so much recrunch the numbers, but make some more of those numbers real to us? I know he was not so much rushed, but he had a lot of information to get out.
William, I I'm, he's on a contract.
Oh, okay.
Oh, I, we have, he has, I think, maybe I'm wrong, Sismita, you can correct me. But I believe that we are pushing him and he's been more than generous with us.
I think.
So I don't want to, I don't want to ask him to do more than than, hopefully, he'll get re-upped for another contract as we move forward. But he has really given to us because he he knows we're interested. He's he's really interested in Stratford and he's interested in, he sees us trying to do the right thing.
So the town of Stratford has hired him or?
Yeah, yes, he got hired to do this.
He got hired to the planning department contract. It was a very small contract, but I think he must have overworked at least up to $6,000 more. And he's not getting paid for that. Yeah, I would hate to have him do more work. But, you know, having said that, he's always very kind and generous. And if you have any questions, you can feel free to email him and CC me.
Actually, William, if you email him, he will respond. So try that.
Okay. Oh, the last thing, too. They talked about in that meeting about deed restrictions and different projects. In Stanford, there's a faction entity called New Neighborhood House. And they have a lot of deed restricted properties. One is the Friendship Building, but a lot of different condos, because my mom lived in one, where you can buy into these places. But as he was saying, you have to sell them based on your median income to qualify. But you don't sell them at a profit. The next person that buys in buys them similar to the person that sold. So projects like that would work really well in Stratford. And they wanted to meet with us because I was talking with the the director of it. They wanted to meet with us to see if they can model one of their properties here in Stratford. And it has kept quite a few people, teachers, you know, EMTs, firefighters, and just regular people in a town because it's made it affordable. And they fit right in with the decor of the neighborhood, but they're deed restricted. And they have to qualify based on the median income of that particular town in order to buy them. So I think that might be a good idea for us to look into as well.
We discussed that in the partnership, one of the partnership meetings. And everybody really feels that is going to have to be one of the solutions that we make. I believe that, and I hope I'm not speaking out of out of turn, but I believe that the committee kind of felt like we are, what we're trying to do right now is the big picture of all the issues versus trying to, trying to zero in on one. Once we get this done, we want to start working at it in terms of a, in terms of the law issues. But we also want to start looking at a project that could be a buildable project, some kind of demonstration project that Stratford could take on.
Yeah.
And so I think that's where that conversation would make the best sense. It's not, send me a link to them and I'll start reading up on them if you have any information on.
I certainly will. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, anybody second that? William seconds it? All in favor? I? Anybody opposed? Hey, thank you guys very much. I appreciate this. I'm glad that we had this short little meeting. And everybody wish John and his brother well tonight.
Yes.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And happy St. Patrick's Day.
I see you great.
All right, get your, get your, get your St. Patty's on for Aileen.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, have a great night, guys.
All right, thank you, guys.
Good night. Don't forget to stop recording, Sismita.
Yeah, right?
Oh, how do you leave?
So we don't lose the meeting.